Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is December 7th, 2021. This is a special meeting before our regularly scheduled meeting of today, which will start at 6:45. It is now 5:15 PM and we will commence with our special meeting. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Well, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We're all here and under our study session this evening, which is the subject matter of our special meeting, we have two items. The first item is to discuss our public engagement strategies. And this item comes about because our council is interested in making sure that we understand our communication-based mechanisms with the public. It is something that we have a real privilege of being able to consider because from a fundamentals-based perspective, we just have so many excellent discussions that you don't see with regard to a lot of the breadth of, you know, subject matter and the depth of the detail that we get into. But a lot of times, some of these, some of these policies aren't really fully reflected in the public sphere. So on another side of it, there's also the ongoing project in a democratic society of making sure that we're engaging adequately and well with the public. We do do a good job of that. It's always a tension between thoroughness of that engagement and efficiency of that communication, of course. And so we're in this ongoing process to try to make sure that we're refining this and optimizing our ability to communicate with the public and gathering the input. But then also, once policy decisions are made and as they're being formulated, how do we best reflect that? And so we're very pleased to, in the end of his five-and-a-half-month stint, have our interim city manager Greg Larson to be able to kick us off and help us out with these two very important study session items this evening. Greg will be rolling off from our city tomorrow on December 8th. But fortunately, as with a lot of things that he's done for us in the last five-and-a-half months, he's had the prescience and foresight to reserve a little bit of time. And so as Jim Troop, our new permanent city manager, begins on January 3rd, Greg has reserved some time to be able to come back and help out with the transition. So thank you very much, Greg, for all that you've done for us and all that you'll do in this very substantive set of agendas that we have this evening. And so without any further ado on this, I'll kick it over to Greg to provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that introduction and members of the council. We actually have two items before you in the study session, both of which, I think, as the mayor indicated, deal with public engagement and communications. The first item will be the public engagement strategies that I discussed with council on July 20th and committed to bringing back for a broader discussion with you. And then we'll move to information on committees and commissions that the council has requested previously. We have about 80 minutes, Mr. Mayor, and planning each of these will take roughly 40, possibly with the commissions taking slightly longer, given the volume of information. But I will try to be fast on both presentations.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, Greg. You know, I think with regard to public engagement strategies, you know, I think council will generally agree. You know, overall, you know, we do a fundamentally good job and it's just some refinements. I, you know, we've all looked over the presentation. It's good. It does a really good job in summarizing what we do well. And I think if you kind of split it 30/50, it's probably a good split. And then just try to make sure that council has a few minutes each to provide some of their input. So, yeah, and I think that we'll probably get some public comment, but I'm not anticipating, you know, an overwhelming voluminous amount in terms of time. So just to keep that in mind and really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. And just given your compliment, I do want to shout out to Katie Nemora, Acting Deputy City Manager, and her staff team that helped in particular on the public engagement strategies, which included Brian Babcock, Public Information Officer Tina Kapoor, our new Economic Development Manager, and I believe even Andre and Tom from Sustainability and Emergency Management Assisted some. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. Is that before you, council? Okay. So brief outline what we're doing currently with some highlights, kind of the way we're framing the outreach going forward with some possible improvements, and then a little bit of discussion on special events and city image. Current engagement activity, this is detailed in the staff report, so I won't provide, I won't go through each of the lines on this slide, but just highlight a couple of them, that we are active on social media. We are getting lots of hits on our website. As you'll see, each month, 50 to 70,000. Our newsletter goes to all households. And pre-COVID, we're hosting 50 special events annually or involved with 50 special events annually. I did want to highlight just some of the things the departments are doing that I think are a bit unique. Budget invites is our brief video YouTube clips that help explain city finances to laypeople. Our Parks and Recreation Department has its Cupertino Cares, for example, the Fourth of July packages. Information Technology even did a public presentation on online security. And Public Works has been doing the library expansion webpage with the video cam and video tours, working with our video team. The manager's office has launched Engage Cupertino, originally with the Climate Action Plan, but will be using it with more items, such as the housing element, which, as the council seen previously, has a very aggressive community engagement program outlined. And that's above and beyond all the required noticing that planning has to do for almost every project to surrounding neighbors and the public. The framework we'd like to use is one we've drawn from looking at other jurisdictions and their best practices, as well as the Institute for Local Government, which is a bit of a research think tank for cities and counties, even in California. And because, as the mayor indicated, we can't do everything on every item to manage efficiency and effectiveness, we're recommending that we start working along the categories that other jurisdictions are using, which is inform, consult, and collaborate. With inform is getting the information out. Consulting is getting input back. And collaborating is the most intense, working directly with some or all of the public to actually come up and design the solutions together. And the art then becomes tagging which outreach efforts for which projects and initiatives. So here's some examples of this. Again, these slides were in your staff reports, so I'm not going to go through them all. On the level of engagement for inform, the providing information, this is really good for existing programs and non-controversial items and getting emergency information out, which digital technologies are helping so much on this because it's so much more efficient than postal. And we're doing this with the local mask mandate, suicide prevention, the organic waste ordinance. We're doing this work already in many cases. The next tier, which is where we want feedback and input, we're thinking it's appropriate for new programs or changes to existing programs and gathering feedback on proposed policies, resolutions, and ordinances. And this is where we engage the public, not only by informing them using the strategies above, but to push the information out more broadly through citywide mailers, through working with commissions, through at least one community meeting, increasingly using webpages to set up interactive methods with the public. And the examples on the right are where we have and are proposing to use it going forward. And so I think those are all examples the council's well familiar with. The highest level of engagement is collaborating, inviting the community to design the solution and to be part of the path forward. This is for the highest program, priority programs. There'll typically be items drawn from the city's work program where they're big and they affect a large part of the city or many people. So we would inform and consult, kind of everything above we do, but we'd also look at a series of workshops or charrettes, setting up a task force or focus groups or a committee. And good examples of this are the Climate Action Plan, which is already at this level. The Housing Element, which will be at this level starting on Thursday with our first public outreach. The Lawrence Smithy Park Design and the Moore Memorial Park Master Plan would be at this level because of the significance of those projects. So we think that outlines kind of the framework we're looking at for the future. But we think there's also other improvements we can use. Being more aggressive with new text messaging outreach. It's one part of the digital communications framework we're not using aggressively. And as I discussed with the council on July 20th, is taking the block leader and neighborhood watch program that you've helped increase our capacity for and really using it as a conduit for community engagement, not beyond just emergency preparedness, but more broadly. And then we also want to just start providing more data. What are outreach reports in terms of webpage hits, pop media posts, and getting our event summary public? Here's one page that we want to start providing on a more regular basis, and it's just for the month of September. What are our webpage hits been? So the garage sale, you know, you'd expect that to be big in September because that's when it happens. While I think come March, it would be less so. And just tracking this variability will be a good tool because as we've learned, you can only manage what you measure. And we want to start increasing our measurements. Our top social media posts for 2021 on Facebook was the garage sale. On Twitter and Nextdoor was the 2021 State of the City. And on Instagram, the Big Bunny 5K. So that's just interesting information to have that we want to start reporting back. Special events are key in most cities. They're particularly important from what I've seen in Cupertino with some of the pent-up demand as people are anxious for the pandemic to end. And they've moved to being virtual, but we look forward to them going public. And we're prepared to get back to the 50 special events that we supported pre-pandemic. And we also want to make sure that that's through council member engagement at the town halls, smaller Q and A's like coffee talks with the council, and supporting the council tabling with staff at city or city-sponsored events. We also want to expand those existing events. For example, the Pride flag raising and the India Independence Day flag raising could be moved as weekend events to make them easier and more accessible to the public, rather than just on weekdays as they've been in the past. We'd also want to look at scheduling other events as possible to maximize public participation. And the big one coming up in the first quarter of 2022 is the library expansion opening, which could span weekday and weekend October opportunities over several weeks because that's going to be such a new icon for the city. And then as we explore these expansions, we'd have come or come back to council to get your assessment of where do we need to do more or where can we scale back and what the resource constraints are related to that. City image, we've put in with engagement, even though it is somewhat different because based on feedback from council, we are adopting a slightly more aggressive strategy than we've had in the past. Where Tier One is we're being conscious about trying to push out all the good stories about the city. You know, that we have the top-rated pavement management program in the Bay Area. That's something we should all be applauding and making sure we all recognize. We're also trying to do more targeted programs where we think there's been some miscommunication, such as on the city's support for affordable housing and appropriate housing for Cupertino. And then we've also started exploring, how do we support the council better in making sure they're able to communicate with their public, knowing that there's constraints on use of public dollars and limitations on that, but making sure opinions can be expressed as well? And improving the city brand, we're thinking this is probably at the lower end of that range, but as we develop the scope and get input from council, we'll bring back the refined budget allocation request at that time. So that summarizes the staff presentation. I did raise through it, Mayor, but as you said, we got you the presentations last night and hopefully you've all had a time to look it over.
Well done, Greg. Very good presentation. And before we bring it to council for our follow-up questions and comments, let me see if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this item. And so I do see one hand raised at this point. That's Jennifer Griffin. And I will remind our members of the public that we're going to go ahead and wait until the end of the first speaker. I'll ask our video group to bring that to two minutes, just keeping cognizant of the time and the fact that we have two study session items. And so our first and only speaker so far on this item is Jennifer Griffin. And again, members of the public, you'll have until Jennifer concludes her comments to raise her hand. And if your hand is raised by then, you'll get called on for these public comments. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, Mayor Darcy. Good evening. And, you know, you guys do an awesome job of reaching out to the public. I am so glad that you guys send out mailers in the mail. I mean, we keep them in one place and I go through there periodically. And there's all these nice, different colored communications from the city. And I'm, you know, I know it's expensive to do that, but I think that that, you talk about getting, putting your money where your mouth is, I guess, or getting the, getting the most benefit. I know it's expensive to mail things, but I really, really think that that's an awesome way of doing it. And I, I think that even the postage costs a lot of money. You are getting them to every household. And because, you know, you can see things in the newspaper or not see them in the newspaper. I'm not on Nextdoor. I don't use Twitter. So I think that having things come in the mail are a really, really good way of doing that. And I, it's always, and I do like the scene and just hearing things that are even over the news. If you guys can do more news blasts, I think that would be awesome, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Great comments. And so I'm going to go ahead and bring this back to council. The only hand I see raised is actually our interim city manager Larson's, who I'm going to attribute that to the vim and vigor of winding up the five-and-a-half months here. But Greg, if you wanted to make a comment at this point, I'm happy to give you the floor before heading over to Vice Mayor Chow. And you'll need to unmute yourself soon. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Griffin brought up something that I did want to mention. Nextdoor is one of the social media sites that the city can't aggressively use. I've been very active with Nextdoor. I've met with their CEO. I've been up to their headquarters. I was an early adopter. Nextdoor only lets public agencies do one-way posts. So we can't see the other post. So if somebody asks a question on Nextdoor that says, "Why can't the city do X?", we have no clue that's been posted unless the member of the public, the council, or others send us the question. We respond to that individual and they post the answer back. So while we're being very aggressive on other social media, we can't be on Nextdoor. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me interject.
Okay, thanks a lot, Greg. And so now we're going to go to Vice Mayor Chow. And following Vice Mayor Chow is councilmember Moore. Just a quick time check, we're at 5:33. So let's, let's try to wrap this one up in about 15 minutes at the most. So I guess that gives us an even three minutes or so each. So Vice Mayor Chow, take it away.
Okay, so Nextdoor, I think it's easy just at the end of every post or in the beginning, put our city can now respond on Nextdoor. And here's where you should send your comments to get answered. And then it has text message. CUSD is already using that with their families. And then I realized that we don't have contact of all the, especially younger, newer residents with children. They tend not to attend council meeting, but they are on the list for, all of them are on the CUSD list. So if we can provide a quarterly message from the city to the CUSD and FUHS families with information related to their family or the school, I think that would be awesome. And I would like us to involve not only the council member commissioners in public engagement and, and also not just commissioners that's within their scope. We hope that one commission, they're on a commission, they might be interested in the roles of another commission. So I hope that we engage all of them on anything that's related to the issue and to the city and invite them to all the events. And because they are our eyes and ears in the community, too. And as for the PR, I think it's, yeah, a reporter asked me, "How come the other people think we're anti-housing?" Then I wonder why the way you approved the all-five-house element project, the only project that we have any resistance from Cupertino residents is a massive office project that's mischaracterized as a housing project. I wonder why. So we do need a better communication with, engagement with the media outlet, not only Mercury, some whole state spotlight. I heard they are more fair and, and other reporters to have that engagement. And for the business, I think we also have business bus that many small business owners don't even know about. We need to do some outreach to our business owners also. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have councilmember Moore, followed by councilmember Willie.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank staff for the report. I think it was great. One of the things that I've noticed is that when we get, dare I call them customer complaints, but resident complaints, and when they come to council, how they get managed and directed through, I think, I think that the council could do some improving on that issue. And perhaps we need some community feedback on that particular process so that we can improve it and again advertise the 311 app. And I think that could help. And I'd like to hear how that's been working from a, from a resident's standpoint. When, when we have a complaint, how are things going? And I, I'd like to hear some feedback about that. We did have the Public Safety Forum a couple of months ago and it was, it went really, really well. There was a report in there from Captain Urana and it talked about the crime statistics. And he went over year over year for each type of crime, how things were going. And it was a really great PowerPoint presentation. And some of the information was actually surprising for crime rates, which had gone down. And I would like to have that information presented because when we get the, the beat report and you read one and then you read the next one, it's hard to tell year over year, you're looking at all these different areas in the city, it's hard to tell what's going on with crime. And I know that that is a big concern for people. So I'd like to have some more reporting on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Moore. You have a minute and 25 seconds left. And so next, we have councilmember Willie, followed by councilmember Way.
Great. Yeah, I'll start with, I believe engagement with our community is one of our most important duties here at the city, knowing what the community does and doesn't want. So I think this, this study session is good to remind us and to let the community know of this important place for us to go and engage. Next, a little bit, kind of like what Vice Mayor said about these other avenues that hold potential. Well, yes, we have the good fortune to be in a area, in a community, with so many people that are tech savvy. These people are on their computers, email, texting. I think we should be trying to maximize our engagement with, with that. I will second what the residents said about the mailers. I do think that we need to explore all avenues. There are residents, especially elderly ones, that are not necessarily able to communicate on the computer and the postcard. So all that being said, I would like to say I think we need to expand on this outreach. When I have previously talked with our PIO officer, Brian, he says that, at least he had told me that when I asked him about how many, how many email addresses is he sending out the notifications to? He says, "Well, roughly 1,200." If the city manager has a better number, I'm all ears, but that's the number he was giving me.
One minute.
And I, I think in a community of 64,000 residents, I tech savvy, I think we should be way higher than that, 4X, 5X, 8X. So I hope we will spend some money to engage some consultants to help us get more of our community involved in engaging with us. So with that, I'll sign out.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I want to echo councilmember Moore said about 311. Actually, I got quite a few good feedbacks because when people email me as that, "Put it into Cupertino 311, you'll get update, you get, you know, resolves." And it does happen. Our staff really are very good at 311. So I hope that we could continue to advocate for residents to report on 311. And also, you know, all, what our cities are doing is really, really good and it's reaching out to a lot of residents. And whether it's email or mailers or, you know, flyers for shows and webinars. And I'm curious of, you know, if we want to spend some money, we have very talented student groups, either in our high school or at De Enza College. And they might have a publishers group or, you know, PIPR group. So maybe we could engage them in addition to give them a job and reward and also encourage our students to be involved in the city affairs. That might be a good venue to explore, too.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Way. All right, well, this has been an issue that I've been, I've been working on over the years and, you know, I want to be really sensitive to how we go about doing this right. You know, first of all, I just want to say, you know, the number's probably between, let's put it at 90%. I think, I think we get 90% of communications right, which is great. You know, I think we basically are a A. Really, where, where I get concerned is the fact that Cupertino does so many things thoroughly and does so many things well. We're obviously a community that has a lot of thoughtful people that are extremely meticulous, but also extremely informed. And that bears itself out in our results, right? It's not an accident that we end up having the lowest rates of COVID in a very thoughtful, you know, county already. It's because people take data, they, they granularize it and they reconstitute it. So I'm not really worried about the fundamentals. What I'm really concerned about, though, is how we communicate what we're doing to the outside world. And so what I'd like to do is set forth some suggestions. And this comes from my seven years of experience here. And I would like to put this into a motion format. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen in a moment, but I will say, I don't think we need to spend money on this. I think this is basically a matter of policy direction. I don't like how this was couched as something along the lines of image, something or the other. This is not about image. This is about communication. And I just want to make sure that people understand this fully. Sometimes I think money does need to be spent. I don't think money needs to be spent here. I think we need to focus on three things. And here's what I would suggest. Okay, so first, have a press plan. When Cupertino makes policy-oriented decisions, the public needs to be notified. Council needs to be informed of how our internal approach to communicating with the outside world is organized. Create a press plan. I've been asking for this for years. And communicate this plan to council and the public. It should include informing the public and working with our policymakers regarding who is receiving the communications, what mechanisms are used and when. And in addition to that, our policymakers need to have that interface with the media on an ongoing basis. I've never once been provided an introduction or, you know, kind of connected with the, the media reporters and agents that are covering Cupertino. And that needs to happen. Number two, okay, so number two in my motion here is encourage and foster high quality of writing. Speaking to what councilmember Way just said, I think what she's saying could be a component. And I thought about this. I thought about using students, but we need to focus on our core competencies within our, you know, our paid staff, frankly. When approaching our more critical issues, the quality of writing is critical. I have found myself over the years rewriting and in some cases outright writing copy. And if staff is, is accurate and fair about it, you know, you will concede that that is absolutely true. I suggest that we recruit permanent staff support with demonstrated abilities and interest in evaluating complex issues and reflecting policy-based directions in a written medium. If we don't do that, find a way to get that, that core competency within our staff now. You know, whether it's a matter of training or just focusing upon that. I, I, I think, you know, I personally, I'm more than happy to work, you know, to try to get us there in my remaining year. Um, but it's, it's something that we really need to focus on. Part of the press plan should be to provide options for how to present a given issue through press releases and other forms of communication. So basically, a press plan would be, you know, something along the lines of, okay, if you have a very complex issue and there are multiple ways of presenting it to the public, here are your options, okay? And here are drafts of how you could couch that. But the problem is we're not given a single draft at this point. And so we need to think about how we're going to approach these issues. Finally, third, be responsive to council decisions and current developments. And, and this is where I think we get hit the most. And, and this is precisely what happens when there's a rapidly moving, you know, issue. Uh, you know, I found this in two thousand and eighteen when I was mayor the first time. And, and basically, you know, and, and I'm not, again, I, I'm honestly really not trying to cast any aspersions. I'm ju- I'm simply trying to identify one thing, um, and, and basically say, look, you, there is, there is a hole here. There's a deficiency. We need to work on this particular type of response. When we have significant decisions that are being made, there's often a public response. Responsiveness to rapidly moving issues is critical when it comes to how we communicate our policy based decisions. When training or hiring applicable staff, focus upon responsiveness generally, but especially proactive and affirmative responses when issues are moving rapidly. And so this is my ask, you know, in those situations where we have a very fast acting, you know, situation. You know, it, it doesn't matter what it is. It doesn't matter whether it has to do with housing. And, you know, someone, you know, from, uh, you know, the general public has contacted H C D. And H C D has emailed our, our city manager and there's like this email kind of like, you know, you, you know, kind of, kind of, like you're not being noticed because it was a bit nondescript. I, I mean, we need to act. We need to act quickly. There are, are certain situations in which, uh, we need to be able to mobilize. And, and I think that it's, it's this core competency of interest in these complex issues. Paying attention as we're, you know, with the public and with the various, you know, members of the public, um, formulating these, uh, topics, topics of discussion, but ultimately public policy as well. So, so that's my motion. I would like to give staff that specific direction, uh, based upon, you know, what I was sharing a moment ago. May I have a second for that motion? And I see Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to, and, and did you want to say anything Vice Mayor Chow with regard to that, uh, direction? Um, the request for direction to staff?
Um, uh, this item, uh, says information to the council and it's not asking for direction from the council. I was surprised at this agenda, how it's worth it. Why are we having a study session without asking for direction? So you still make a motion?
We can give direction even though it is a study session item. Um, Mr. City Attorney, can you please provide guidance upon that point?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the, the key issue is whether the item has been agendized in a way that allows the public to have notice of what's under consideration. And the agenda does clearly say that we will be discussing the public, public engagement strategies, uh, which is concise, but a, an accurate description of what is being discussed and what's under consideration.
Okay, because usually for others study session, the recommended action is seek council input or something like that. But for both of these items, the recommend they, they did, I should, recommended action did not specify that. So maybe, um, it might be misleading to the public that we are not giving direction today. We are just receiving information. Yeah. Oh, I mean, second one has provide direction to staff. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, following on the city attorney's comment, I think your staff would view this as, um, direction from the council through adoption of your motion to pursue those three avenues as additional strategies to meet the communication and engagement needs of the city. So I, I, I do see it in keeping and appropriate direction from the council.
Okay, great. So noted. I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Interim City Manager as well as Mr. City Attorney. Um, I, I think we're good with having this, uh, motion on table. And, and again, you know, I didn't make this part of the motion. I don't think we need to spend more money. You know, I, I, I think it's really just a matter of, you know, kind of focusing on particular issues, setting forth, um, you know, policy recommendations, which I believe is what we've done with this direction. Um, Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak to the motion on the table before, uh, proceeding?
Um, yes, I would. Uh, so we do have, um, some P R firms in case there is something that gets, uh, more complicated to explain in the future. We do have some that we have used in the past that we could, uh, um, consult with in the future if we need to. My only concern, so I, I am aware of that part. My only concern is that having a press plan is that you could have council members who disagree on a particular issue. Uh, and the press plan might not be able to, uh, reflect each, uh, individual's views. And, um, case in point, uh, I was also, uh, asked by a member of the press and probably the same one that, uh, the Vice Mayor is talking about, uh, and, and wanting to interview me, quote, about Cupertino's reputation uh, of being anti-housing, end quote. And I got questions like, um, how do you think the city can change its reputation of being anti-housing? And many housing advocates have labeled Cupertino as NIMBYs and anti-housing. What are you, what are your thoughts on this reputation? So you could potentially have, um, if you're trying to make a press plan for, around those types of questions, um, you could potentially end up with different answers from, uh, different council members depending on how they view it. What do you want to do with that?
Okay, well, let, let me, um, let, let me elaborate on what a press plan means. A press plan doesn't mean you go and you, um, you, you, you change the policy direction of council. A press plan simply means that when these types of situations arise, when we have stated policy direction and established policy direction from council, we have a mechanism out there that will be responsive, that will, uh, that will, that will be able to articulate those policy positions. So in this kind of situation, okay, uh, you're referring to a, a specific example. Um, so I, I don't want to delve too much into a specific example, but if that, uh, e- example is such that there is a stated policy direction that, that has been decided upon by council, that press plan includes a plan for responding back. That, that press plan says, okay, you know, if the reporter comes in, what we're going to do, you know, for example, you know, we're going to go to the city manager and we're going to go to the mayor. Uh, part of the press plan becomes, you know, with regard to communication between members of the media and our council. When a council member gets elected, we have four or five reporters that cover Cupertino. Those introductions are going to be made. I'm at the end of my seventh year on council. That has never been done. So that's part, that's what I mean by the press plan, the communication. Because, you know, as one of the five elected public representatives of Cupertino, I need to know, you know, who the people are that are having those mouthpieces to the press, you know, with the rest of the world. And, and, and I think that, you know, a, a press plan in general, and let me go back to what I was, uh, describing as the press plan here. Um, specifically, so there's no confusion. Um, the public needs to be notified when Cupertino makes policy oriented decisions. And we need to know how those, that internal approach to communicating with the outside world is organized. So it's, it's not about kind of getting to consensus. It's, it's when we already have consensus, when we already made that decision, how does that get communicated? Especially in those times when we're in a rapidly moving communicative, you know, situation. Because, uh, you know, i- i- in my perspective, a lot of the approach has basically been, okay, let's time this out. The press cycle will die down in a certain amount of time and therefore, uh, we won't have to worry about it as much. But what we have seen, especially as pertains to some of these issues, is that it doesn't die down. Because we're a bit of an exemplar, you know, Cupertino is a bit of an exemplar. We, 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 we have, you know, at various times, the most well-funded, single, uh, private entity in the world. But also we have, you know, great education system and, and just a, a number of other factors that are going for us. There, there's nobody that is more, uh, diverse. And yet more recently, we've been accused of being extremely segregated, whi- which, you know, I think if you really look at some of those mechanics, you see why that is so incredibly preposterous. And so for me, that's a matter of communicating. That's a matter of saying, hey, let's look at the facts here. Let's look at the council policy direction and decision. And let's affirmatively, instead of trying to, you know, ignore. I, I, I have literally had issues that are, the issues that are, are, are the most salient and most focused upon issues in our city, um, you know, starting from several years ago, just be completely ignored. And, and what I mean is that if, 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 if we're being approached by literally six to a dozen, you know, media mechanisms, if I forward those inquiries to our staff, we should have some follow-up. We should have a plan for understanding how that, you know, subsequently gets communicated. I can pull those emails from several years ago. You know, in this situation and in subsequent situations, I simply did not get a single, um, a single response. Now, it's a little bit better these days, but we still don't have a plan for how we go, you know, about approaching these types of situations. So that's what I'm requesting. And that's, you know, what I've been, I, I, I think I've been reiterating and requesting repeatedly over the years. But I'm really glad that we finally have a motion on the table as well as a second for being able to, you know, um, proceed on a public policy basis on this. Um, I see Vice Mayor Chow with your hand raised, as well as interim city manager Larson. Vice Mayor Chow?
Hi. So, yeah, of course I'm supportive of your proposal. And I'd like to point out that if we have, um, me communicating with the media, a lot of times it's not just sending your message to them. There is a relationship with the reporter and the media that relationship needs to be built and maintained. And therefore, when they report, they, they, there, there, there is that relationship. It's less likely they'll treat you more ways as a person rather than trying to portray things incorrectly. And they'll have, and I have been involved with some campaigns in the past. This is how we build that. We have specific person in the campaign team that build a special relationship with different, uh, media outlet. Maybe that's something Cupertino needs to start doing. And another thing is, uh, this item actually is, um, come public engagement strategies. I am a little surprised, uh, I mean, this is a really well-prepared, uh, staff report. Uh, that it's really nice to see that we summarize everything. Maybe we should have this summary every year to reflect on how we are doing and how to improve. However, I, there is the, this public engagement strategy doesn't have public in it. So which part of the public that we are not reaching right now, like the seniors who cannot access online content? And, or young families who are not getting involved. So I wonder, uh, going forward, maybe not today, the public engagement strategy should be in, be thinking about. How do we engage the public who are usually not receiving information? So we can improve, um, in the engagement of different, uh, um, less engaged groups, um, going forward.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I honestly think that this, uh, direction from the motion will help with that as well. It will help to communicate a, a lot of what's going on with regard to, uh, wha- what's actually being decided on a policy level. You, you know, I, I want to, I, I want to just clarify, Vice Mayor Chow, that this is not with regard to, um, you, you know, your, your example of a campaign, this is not advocacy. This is a matter of taking a policy direction that has been made, uh, that has been decided upon by, you know, our collective council and communicating that. Um, Councilmember Willie, before, uh, and let me go to interim city manager Larson since I, you know, did put him into the, uh, comment line here. Greg, uh, you'll have to unmute yourself, Greg.
Think after two years. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I did want to comment on first Vice Mayor's comment. I think just getting the metrics forward will force us to get better as we keep tracking those metrics and we start looking, um, at who we are reaching and who we are not reaching. And I think that's part of the refinement. I actually introduced your city staff team to another city that I think is further along the path of an aggressive engagement and outreach program. And that's what they started working on last year was the more sub-market targeting of their effort. So I think that's a natural outgrowth. And in terms of what the mayor focused, I'll go back to where he started. Ninety percent of what we're doing is right. I think that staff is good at communicating when we get an award, you know, for having the best pavement system. The facts are what the staff can handle. I think where I, I find the mayor's motion blending well with the strategy that staff has laid out was particularly that third tier of communications where it's the policy statement, not advocacy. But here's what the city council has decided as a policy position, which is more the responsibility of the council. And in particular, why largely in council manager forms of government, the mayor is made the spokesperson of the council's actions. Because, you know, the council's actions and policy direction can change over time. Staff can't be the reflection of that, but it is appropriate for the political leadership of the city to be the ones that are articulating and communicating that policy perspective. And that's where I thought the mayor's motion fit right in with that tiering that staff laid out for communications. And I think we could blend those together well and bring back incremental action programs for your consideration.
Yeah, th- thank you, Greg. You, you know, you're, uh, articulate and thoughtful as always. I, I want to push back on one item though. I, I agree with what you're saying with regard to, uh, staff in general. But when it comes to our communication mechanism, because policy does effectuate staff action. Um, a- and so if basically our communications area, right? So, you know, we're talking about hundreds of employees, but a very limited subset of those employees need to be able to, you know, are just outward facing, right, yourself, right? To a lesser degree, your city attorney, our public information officer. You know, i- i- if we have those, you know, key people that are outward facing and naturally are going to be the points of contact, then I think there, that, that, there's, there's that core capability of being able to take that some, like a somewhat more complicated and complex policy direction and being able to communicate it, right? So if, if someone is saying, you know, Cupertino's negative reputation on housing, for example, you know, the policy, uh, setting is such that we don't see it as a negative reputation on housing that has been earned. It is, it is a negative reputation on housing that has been communicated, right? And, and so, y- y- you know, it's, it's one of these things where, you know, I hear what you're saying, but the fact is, policy is not made in a vacuum. Our projects are not made in a vacuum. You know, policy is actually something that is going to reflect upon the entirety of the government agency, you know, ultimately. And the spearhead for communication of that must lie within a department or a function that is labeled communication. I, I mean, I, I, I think that, that's just, that's just a very clear, um, a- a- and, and obvious fact. So I, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to supplement, I'm not trying to replace, um, any particular, you know, staff. But I do think that there are core competencies that should be worked upon. Because when I'm working on a, a press release for a critical item, I need a partner, right? Or whoever happens to be mayor, well, you know, needs a partner. Um, you, you know, and if the city manager with the three hundred different things that there, that person is juggling at any given point in time doesn't have that ability, it ends up falling upon other members of staff, right? And, you know, I, this, and this is not, this is not exaggeration. This is not, um, this is not a distortion. There have been times in the last several years, right, where the city manager wasn't available. I had to call the city attorney, you know, and we start formulating this language together. So, so I, you know, I'm just saying that whenever there is, uh, a need there, we can't just kind of turn away and say, you know, ultimately that's a policy thing. Because policy here and policy everywhere absolutely informs virtually everything that we do ultimately. So, you know, when it comes down to the staff section that is, you know, dealing with the communication, that communication is not simply, you know, amongst ourselves and inward, that communication is also outward. So, you, you know, I, I, I think, I think we just, you know, need to, need to work on, you know, those particular areas. And like you say, you know, and I'm sorry I'm not good at it. You know, I'm sorry this is not, you know, you know, my career for, you know, more than six hundred dollars a month. Uh, but, but, you know, I don't focus on the ninety percent. I focus on the ten percent because I feel like, you know, the people that elected me into office want me to focus on that ten percent. Um, and, and that's a policy thing. And if I need to defend it, I will defend it as a policy thing. Um, but, but I'm not unappreciative of everything that staff does. I think they're wonderful. I think they've helped put us, uh, into an amazing situation as a jurisdiction, right? Um, but at the same time, there are refinements. And so hopefully that can be, you know, understood and, and mutually respected. Um, Councilmember Willie, uh, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, boy, that, that's tough to follow, but, um, due to my strong belief in the importance of community engagement, and that's two-way engagement, I don't want to move on to our next study session without making a few follow-up comments, you know, that, uh, this policy plan that you've got is fantastic. It's wow. If only we had it a year ago, three years ago. I mean, by all means, let's, let's pass this and let's put this into, into play. This is a great plan. And I'll definitely say, you are incredibly good at your, your ideas and putting them in a way that we can all clearly understand them. And they capture essentially all the, 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 the things that we need to, to be aware of on these. So thank you so much. Let's move forward.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Um, I don't see any further hands raised, and so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore. Hi. Councilmember Way.
Hi.
Councilmember Willie.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi.
Mayor Paul.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk, and, uh, thank you interim city manager Larson. Um, I think you had mentioned our second study session item, but now that we are upon it, I'm gonna go ahead and reiterate that study session item number two is information on commissions and committees in Cupertino and other cities. Uh, you know, another fantastic job done. I'm gonna go ahead and give this a ninety-five percent because, you know, not just by dint and reason of the fact that we have so many commissions and committees, but we do such an effective job of, of outreach to the community as well as interfacing with our staff liaisons for each of these. Um, but of course, there are refinements that can always be made, and that is the case here. Uh, Mr. Larson, would you please, uh, present the item for the information on commissions and committees?
Great. Can you see the slide deck?
Yes.
Great. And for both of these items, both the prior one and this one, they're items the council asked me particular to focus on when I came by on board as your interim city manager. So I kind of view these as checking the box, so to speak, of requests the council made of me. For the commissions and committees, it had been with the, uh, council for quite a while, looking at them. It's come forward at various times. And this is a lot to cover, given we're running late. Um, and I'm assuming the council's gonna wanna stop at about six thirty-five, six forty for a brief break before the regular council meeting. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we could continue some of this after the regular agenda tonight if we are able to get done before your adjournment time. Um, in particular, I'm gonna race through to the interim city manager observations, which are some of the items you council asked me to look at, but let's run into it. So this has been on your work plan in a variety of ways. Um, and in fact, in your work program for this year, commissions are embedded throughout the work program in a variety of areas, and we've tried to consolidate that work before you tonight. Um, in particular, what the commi- council has asked for is information on comparison to other cities. So these are our commissions, and this was all provided in the staff report. So I'm not going to walk through each of them. Attachment C gives you the scope of each commission, and in the staff report is a listing of the commissions, including the subcommittee for the planning commission. We also, besides the commissions, this council has a number of standing committees which are differentiated from commissions for the purpose of this report and analysis that committees have two council members on them. And they may have public, but they have at least two council members, while the commissions typically do not. Um, what the council has asked for and that, uh, you've been waiting to have brought back to you is the comparison of Cupertino with other jurisdictions. So this is the summary chart where you add up the number of commissions and committees with all the other cities in the county. And you'll see we're tied for second highest, even though our population and staffing is lower than the other ones that are up there, uh, with us. Los Altos Hills is another smaller jurisdiction that has a lot of commissions as well. And I did some work for them and the staff load impacts were significant. But this gives you the comparison of Cupertino, where we're at the top of the list and really only exceeded by larger jurisdictions in terms of the number of commissions and committees we have. We do provide that breakdown just on commissions. We're still at the top of the list in Cupertino. We're still, or, uh, for committees, we're still at the top of the list. So that was information the council has asked to have come back. And I will point out that for the comparisons of FTE, we've excluded fire and police departments. So that's why some of the other cities have much lower staffing than you would otherwise anticipate because we don't have police and fire. Mountain View staffing is much higher than two fifty-three because of their fire and police departments. Moving on. Commission membership requirements vary slightly between the commissions, um, from having to be a resident to in a couple of cases, being a qualified elector. We also have some, uh, commissions that need particularly subject matter expertise. So a question for council would be changing to a residency requirement for consistency on all of our commissions. Uh, then we have the series of commission changes that council has discussed. Um, there's been mixed council direction on whether to set up a traffic or transportation commission. Your staff believes the bike ped commission currently considers multiple modes of transportation and is viewing it holistically, moving towards the complete streets framework. So we're not sure it's as critical to set up a separate commission, especially given the workload impacts, but maybe to recognize the broadened role of the bike ped with complete streets to get the broader perspective reflected in that. For senior services, six of the thirteen cities have a senior commission. This council or this Cupertino council deserved its, dissolved its senior commission in two thousand nine it to avoid overlap with the senior advisory council. And then in two thousand eighteen, it was reevaluated, establishing it, and decided to continue the partnership with the SAC rather than setting up a redundant body. Um, housing, uh, some interest in expanding social services as part of the, uh, housing commissions um, that would require some additional staffing. Only one other commission did we find has a blend of housing and human services. Um, but our housing commission does review human services grant funding, uh, similar to Sunnyvale. So, uh, the county provides most of the social services. As you know, for Cupertino, it's limited to our CDBG grant funds through the county. Um, fine arts name change. This name change is per the work program planned to be implemented this fiscal year per the request of council and the commission to make it fine arts and culture, to recognize their broadened scope of work. Uh, committee charters, we have two committees that don't have adopted charters, the fiscal strategic plan committee and the economic development committee. Uh, for the fiscal strategic plan, only five cities in the county have it. Our fiscal strategic plan committee is really brought into action in spring on a once-a-year cycle. Um, but we, if we are gonna have it, we should recognize it and, and formalize it. For the economic development committee, two cities have committees, two cities have commissions, and your new economic development manager on the staff team is working on this issue to bring forward for completion this fiscal year with both the recommendation and options for council consideration. Scope of the ERC. No other city that we've surveyed has an environmental review commission and committee. And I was quite surprised when I learned about it. It dates back for quite, quite a while. However, it was presented on April fifteenth to look at some session, uh, possible changes to the ERC, to roll the duties into the planning commission, dissolving the ERC the way it is, to expand the scope, to act in an advocacy capacity and provide education and engagement, or changing the composition of the ERC to address potential conflict issues. Personally, as your interim manager, I think the first or the third might make more sense. In most cities, the role of the ERC is played by your professional staff, working with consultants. Um, but we seek council direction there. For adding commissions, just given the workload of your staff, the size of our staff, the aggressiveness of the city's work program, I would recommend not pursuing other commissions and committees at this time. But if you do want to do so, to provide that as direction, uh, for specific commissions to look at as part of your work program development next spring with your new city manager. So here's my observations. First, one of the things this council has done great is getting the commissions involved in identifying potential work program items. And then the council, as the policymakers and priority setters for the city, determine what from the commissions as well as from council members in the community are gonna be the top priorities of the city and ranking those in order. That's just a great way to do it because otherwise you could end up with twenty sets of priorities, one from each commission, committee, and the council, which would be impossible for your staff to manage. Um, I, one of the items I'm most concerned about is having staff members of committees, particularly for the ERC, because having the city manager, planning directors, community development director, planning manager, assistant city manager, or other staff on that committee, we create potential Brown Act challenges for staff talking to themselves about the day-to-day work of the city. Um, for example, if the assistant city manager, community development director, and planning manager are all in the ERC, and I'm in a staff meeting and I wanna understand the status of an EIR that's underway or an initial, uh, study, having that discussion with my three staff in the room would create an inadvertent Brown Act violation, which is kind of absurd. So, plus you have the hierarchy of asking staff to vote for or against what their bosses, the council, want in a committee framework. That's just kind of a strange dynamic. And then the last point I already mentioned, which is additional commissions and committees should be targeted on an as-needed basis through the city's work program so that any staffing and budget impact can be folded into the fiscal review. Mr. Mayor, I rushed through a lot as quickly as I could, given the time, so I'll stop there.
Okay, great. Uh, really appreciate it, Greg. You did a great job as always. And, um, let me go to our member of the public at this point with her hand raised. Um, before we bring back the council for questions and comments and, uh, potentially follow-up direction, I'll re- reiterate the, um, procedure here very briefly. Um, before the first member of the public gets done speaking, you'll need to have your hand up. Uh, you'll have two minutes to speak. And our member of the public with her hand raised is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and, you know, I've been going to the, uh, Cupertino City Council Meetings Planning Commission, ERC, DRC, since we annexed in two thousand and one. I think I first showed up at two thousand and three because there were some issues. And at this point, I'm, I would be pretty protective of the ERC and the DRC. The ERC has worked very, very well over the last, what, twenty? How long has it been, twenty-one years, nineteen years? It has a specific way that it works, and there have been, uh, staff members in there over the years. I mean, it, and, and I mean, they went through the whole Apple DR, uh, ERC situation. I think that it provides, and I think it's, I don't want it rolled into the planning commission because there's a lot of things that the ERC needs to work on that are fast, um, potential issues with, uh, plumes of, uh, things that have shown up around the city that they're potential ERC. Now, we have had some interference from the state with the planning laws, so, uh, the housing laws, so I'm not, until we had this housing law dilemma, we see them trying to take over stuff from the ERC. So the other thing is, why don't we have a historical commission attached to the city? Um, I sent you all an email about the fight to save the Graves House, which is now the apartment complex fell through. It's sitting out there, dilapidated, the roof is going to, you know, go under. Um, we need to have, San Jose has a history department that is attached firmly into the city. And I think we need to have that. We don't have that in Cupertino. Uh, the Graves House, I will talk more about during oral. But you need to have the ability to have sites declared historical, um, parts of the city, et cetera. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, our next and final speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello. So I, this is actually a good opportunity for me to say something I've been thinking for quite a while. The DRC, which is Design Review Committee. It was, I remember it being, having far more meet, maybe I'm wrong, but I remember it having more meetings and taking care of some things that were appropriate in the past. And it, but in the recent past and, I don't know, last few years, there hasn't been a whole lot of DRC meetings. And I often wonder where these things go. And when I see approved projects, I go, um, why? Well, I see them because they're being built, not because I knew about them. And these are mostly residential, smaller projects in neighborhoods. And I look, I go, wait a minute, this should not have, be happening. This, it does not mark all the boxes on what you're supposed to do when you design a home based on city's policy. And I ask myself, did it go to DRC? How did I miss it? No, because they keep canceling meetings, so they haven't had it. And my fear is a lot of things that should go to DRC or somewhere are being handled as minor modifications by the director, and it really worries me. And now that I've learned more, I think that's been going on for quite some time. Um, I, I, so I guess my point is, I think maybe someone should be looking into what is directed to DRC and what is directed to minor modifications for the director and, and get a clear understanding of what those.
Fifteen seconds.
That's it. Thanks.
Great, uh, thank you, Lisa. And, um, let me, let me just go straight to, uh, you know, last speaker's comments. You know, I noticed, uh, on your presentation, Greg, in, uh, I'm not sure if it's slide number twelve, but it has twelve at the top of it, impact of adding commissions. Um, the, the, the Design Review Committee is not actually listed on the hours spent annually. Is that basically because no time was spent last year or on, on design review? Uh, you're muted, Greg.
It's listed under the planning commission. It's a subcommittee of the planning commission for forty hours.
Okay, so it's considered, uh, oh, I see, I see it, I see it. So forty hours on design review, got it. And, uh, when calculating out these hours, was that done as an average over a couple of years? Or how is that done in terms of figuring out?
I would need to ask, um, Ms. Nomura to respond to that.
I'm sorry, who's Ms. Nomura?
Katie.
Oh, oh, uh.
Katie Nomura, deputy city manager. Um, they, each department kind of reviewed how much time. I think they looked a little bit at, you know, what it, what was it pre-COVID and now during COVID and tried to come up with an estimate of how many hours.
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually think these numbers look pretty reasonable. I, you know, I've seen some estimates in the past that prospectively were quite generous, but, but I think these are probably actual hours, and I have no reason to think that they're inaccurate. Okay, thanks very much. Um, let's go on to, um, our city council members. And, uh, city council, let me just do a quick time check here. Uh, we're at six twenty-three. Let's try to, you know, convene, uh, the regular meeting on time at six forty-five. So that gives us about twenty minutes, um, to go over this. Um, let's try to do this. Let, let's try to have some initial comments from our council, try to encapsulate them. Please try within about a minute and a half, but, uh, you, you'll get two minutes. And then we'll try to put a motion on the table and see if we can, you know, try to give some, uh, specific direction to staff that way. So we'll start with, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie.
So I get two minutes after this, uh, item was proposed in the beginning of two thousand and nineteen and the carryover every.
Now, we can also carry on to another time if.
So. Uh, I think, I, I think it's fine art, chen, adding, um, culture to the commission makes sense. However, this is not a name change. Don't sell it as a name change. It's, it's an expansion of the role. And then who proposed it? I don't know, but why do we add an item that's proposed later while we are rejecting other items that are also slight expansion of the role? For example, transportation. I think it makes sense to add that. I think it makes sense to add that to planning, which is what Palo Alto, I think, Ontario View also does. It's a conflict of interest with the Bike Ped Commission. For community engagement, that's something I had hoped to consider, not adding a commission, but adding it to library, especially now we have a communication strategies plan that probably will have some metrics that we need a commission, commissioners to help look at and look at segmenting markets that we need to outreach to. I hope the library commission can be expanded to take on this role. Social services, we don't provide social services. Therefore, it's important to inform our residents where to get the services, either from the county or nonprofit agency. So I would like to see the Housing Commission be expanded to consider mental social services and maybe also senior if we need to combine that with a commission under the city. Because Housing Commission has a lot of potential, but then their meetings are a key to the law. They often only receive information, and I would like them to take a more active role in serving the city. Design Review Commission, I thought that's a legal requirement, but I do know Palo Alto has an architecture review committee. Maybe we should look that into that further. Fiscal Strategic Committee, I didn't know what that is. It has one meeting and a year sometimes canceled. Economic Development Committee is unsure what's the role. We need to reexamine both of them. Public Works is an area I think we need a supervision and input from the public. Otherwise, it's a department with the largest budget in the city. But the list of CIP projects are often proposed without transparency and without much public engagement. Whoever asks for a rating of how the top list, top list of projects are determined, I could. Thank you.
Thank you. So next we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so I would recommend that this item, that we have more time for it. This is really not adequate. So I do really like the member of the public, I believe it was Jennifer Griffin, suggesting the historical commission. I don't know where that could be placed, but I like the idea of that. I do want to point out that there is another committee, the Cupertino Strategic, or the Cupertino CUSD Strategic Partnership Committee. And that has two city staff members on it. There's no charter for its composition. And two city council members, along with CUSD board and staff as well. Economic Development Committee has up to four city staff members, members of the Chamber of Commerce, and some members of the city council. So there's, the issue with having city staffers shows up in a few places. Design Review Committee, I think we need to bring that back to council because I'm reading their charter. They are in the municipal code. The purpose of the Design Review Committee shall endeavor to reduce the Planning Commission's workload, et cetera. You can read it. And it will, it shall include all aspects, all aspects of site and architectural design, including the relationship of the building to its surrounding land uses and the street, compliance with adopted height limit setbacks, and more. Protection of surrounding land uses from intrusive impacts such as noise, glare, dust, chemicals, smells, visual disturbances. D, provide adequate parking and circulation for vehicles and pedestrians. We had no Design Review Committee review of what happened at Westport, which is showing up later, or the Beta Brothers project. And this, I think, really needs to be looked over to see if we have actually been in compliance with what we have in our municipal code. The Environmental Review Committee, it was actually supported by our former city manager that we expand the role of the ERC to include things which would impact the residents of Cupertino because right now, we're not allowed at the ERC to study what's going on at Lehigh, for instance, or if a major development is happening on our borders, which is going to impact us. We can't study the traffic impacts, the air quality impacts in order to advise council to perhaps write a letter to that city about the project and how it's impacting us. So I think it needs to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie. Willie.
Maybe the city manager can put back that slide on traffic and transportation. I think, I think it helps. So, traffic and transportation, okay. Well, let's kind of put that aside for a second and say, what are the most important, the most important issues for the community here? Number one, school. Number two, crime. Number three, traffic. Well, trying to have the Bike and Ped Commission do traffic. Well, let's just kind of brainstorm. I'll try to be brief. Traffic and traffic transportation. How to increase ridership on buses and other public transportation? How to improve traffic flow in congested streets? How to improve the individual intersections that have bad level of service? So what we want to do is to improve the life of our residents and our visitors to the city. And to me, traffic and transportation is not something that should be under Bike and Ped. Bike and Ped has a very important role. Bicycle safety, bicycle paths, pedestrian paths. Yes, absolutely. But traffic and transportation is vital to everyone in our community. And yet, we don't have a commission on it. We have other commissions where we get the notification, meetings canceled. Let's revisit some of these other commissions and maybe combine some of them. But the important ones to our community, I think, need to be really well-understood and at the top of our list. So I really wanted this once I was on the city council, and it's never gone anywhere either. So I'll leave it at that. Take it away.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I agree with Councilmember, uh, sorry, my mind is blank, okay? I remember, I agree with Councilmember Moore that we need more time for this. And yes, I had a kind of a deja vu. I feel that we're talking a lot about things, just like when we're doing our city plans. We want a lot of things done, but we have to consider our time and our staff time and our budget. So I do think we need more time to think about this, to, you know, maybe do a real study on this. And we can add as many commissions as we want, but we really have to be realistic. We have staff time to do it. And like Councilmember Willie said, maybe we need to reduce some of other commissions and to add ones that we think that's important to have or will make a difference. You know, we can have all these commissions and then do studies. But if we don't have a work plan to go with it, if we don't have a county to collaborate, those studies can go nowhere. So we really have to look at, why are we adding these? What are the functions? What real work plans has come out of it? And do we have the staff time to do it? Do we have the budget to do it? So I think we need more time.
Greg, did you want to say something? And unmute yourself, Greg.
Appreciate the council's discussion. I think it is a complex issue to grapple in this short amount of time, especially given all of the ramifications of the decisions on workloads. There was one point, as I raced through, that I didn't make clearly enough. That was in the staff report, but as I glossed over my slides and the council member mentioned it, and I just wanted to be very clear. Commissions have no role overseeing or supervising any department. So even if you set up a public works commission, the public works commission only role is to advise and recommend to the councils. Commissions and committees advise and recommend to the council. They don't direct staff. And I just wanted to be very clear on that, per the municipal code and how almost every city in California is structured.
Right. Okay, well, before we take it back to any other rounds, we are running pretty brief on time. And so I'll just initiate it by saying, or my comments by saying that I would be supportive of bringing this back at a later date. I think, given, you know, the number of commissions and committees that we have, we probably need a workshop on this, you know, for this particular topic because it is literally as far-ranging as our city goes. They're good reflections of what our members of the community prioritize as wanting to have, you know, special, you know, sub-bodies within the city governmental structure. So for me, I think if I had to triage things, I think that it's particularly important, if no charter exists or no description exists that we're, we'll hold into, that we need to fix that. So for me, I think if I had to identify two committees that we have to fix right away, it's the Economic Development Committee and the Fiscal Strategic Committee, because they simply have no charters. I don't know what rules of procedure they follow. I don't know how the members are selected, you know. And but I do know that the city of Cupertino elects five council members. And from what I've seen, they have no input whatsoever as to the composition outside of the, you know, appointments on an annual basis. So this is what I would request, you know, with regard to the Economic Development Committee and the Fiscal Strategic Committee. You know, I would like them merged into one. And I would call it the Economic Development and Fiscal Strategic Committee. Like Greg was just saying, you know, the reminder is that all of this is advisory with, you know, some limited exception. But this would be all advisory, and I'd like to see five members on such a committee with representatives from retail, traditional retail, from the technology sector, one from our hotels, and two from our council. So that would be, make it pretty similar. If I were to put a motion forth, I would put a motion forth on this. But, you know, I think it's important enough that we can go ahead and, you know, fold it into a workshop in the future. I'd like to see it, you know, come back to council, perhaps, perhaps in February. You know, we have a new city manager. And I think this is actually a pretty good initial project in terms of cleaning up some of our committee and commission stuff. The other one, the Environmental Review Committee, you know, I think it's important to have. I think, you know, environmental issues are extremely important to our community. I hear what Greg is saying with regard to, you don't want staff to create a Brown Act problem. So, yeah, I think one way we fix that is with the composition. I don't think it should be a majority of staff because then it basically ends up kind of derogating the public function. And then you kind of ask yourself as either a council member or a planning commissioner, why am I sitting here if basically I'm, you know, vetoed by staff? And so, but I think that, you know, a wise planning commissioner or a wise council member, you know, needs to very, very heavily rely upon the expertise and the training of a staff member. But I think composition, city manager, the director of planning, a planning commissioner, and two council members, those would be my asks and recommendations for the Environmental Review Committee. I know that Councilmember Moore talked about scope, you know, of what they talk about and can, you know, advise upon in ERC. So, you know, I think absolutely we should, you know, be bringing that back in terms of having a more elaborate workshop. So, I mean, I think if I were to put forward a suggestion, I would move that we direct staff to take our council feedback without, you know, specifying it here, but just to go back to the tape, so to speak, and, you know, see what each of the council members were interested in and prepare to bring us back to a council and commissions, not council and commissions, but commissions and committees workshop, perhaps sometime in mid-first quarter of the next calendar year. So that would be my motion. May I have a second for that motion? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised, so I'd like to give you that first courtesy.
Second to bring it back?
Yeah, bring it back. Yeah. So I just like a dedicated workshop for that. And so I don't see Councilmember Moore's hand raised anymore. And thank you for being, you know, respectful and cognizant of our time commitments and constraints. You know, tonight, obviously, is a very big meeting, a very packed agenda. And so Vice Mayor Chow, what I'm going to do is ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote on this because it's basically a to-be-continued type of item. Madam City Clerk, would you?
Can I still make one short comment?
Briefly, please. Thank you.
So what I propose to add transportation to planning because planning canceled fifty percent of their meetings when I got on the board. And I propose to add to social services to housing because, social service to housing because housing has been very, not doing much. The grant program is only once a year. And what I proposed for community engagement, for engagement for library because library was in danger of being canceled also when I joined the council. So these are three commissions that have not been effectively using their time. So I thought it makes sense to expand their responsibility. Thank you.
You know, and I'll just add that, you know, it really is a great project for our new city manager because of the fact of the breadth of the scope of all the commissions and committees. And a great way to, you know, meet the people that are actively involved in our.
Oh, one more thing, the school committee, Strategic Committee also doesn't have a charter. And there is a confusion on what are they? That we could.
That was raised with comments, and I would expect that to be, you know, addressed as well. So thank you very, Vice Mayor Chow. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that roll call vote for the motion to bring this back as a workshop in the middle of the next, next calendar year quarter?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Bush and Kerry is unanimous.
Well, thank you very much. We're at six forty right now. So let's go ahead and break for approximately five minutes, a little bit less. I'll start the six forty-five meeting on time. And Madam City Clerk, please confirm that there are no other links to, link to. This is the one that will conduct our regular meeting.
That is correct, Mayor. It's the same link.
Great. Thanks so much, everyone. We'll see you in a few minutes.